Let's call the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to order on Tuesday, October 6, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigley, Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Devens moving to approve the agenda, Teresa seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. The Pledge of Allegiance. Ashley, have you ever led the Pledge of Allegiance for us yet? Oh, I'm sorry that I've missed you. Okay. Would you like to do it for us tonight?
I'd love to.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn my laptop like.
Right.
Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the public.
One nation.
For God. Indivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Inga, is there anybody that would like to speak at this time?
Um, the only person from the public on the call is Melissa Frank, and she is here with Casey's, and I assume she'll just wait until her agenda item?
I would imagine that's accurate. Item number four, five, approval of the consent agenda. Larry, motion to approve, and Teresa seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right. Presentation by city clerk regarding the November 3, 2020 election. Almost changes every day, so please don't hold it against Leanne if tomorrow things are different. But um, thank you for doing this. We appreciate you putting in the extra time, and I'll hand it over.
Okay, thanks. Um, Inga, can you help me share my screen here? Or do I just open here?
Click the green button.
Okay.
And then it'll come up with options, then you can select which screen you want to show, or just the PowerPoint document.
Okay. All right. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, here we are. Vote 2020. This is the fourth and final election of 2020, November 3 election. And I thought it would be good to start with some basic information on elections, and then talk about some elections that are particular, or some information that is particular to the November election. I did want to mention first off, the role of the Wisconsin Elections Commission. The Elections Commission is charged with administering and interpreting election law, but they do not create election law. Election law is created by the legislature. You can find the election law in chapters 5 through 12 of the state statutes. And the Elections Commission provides a lot of guidance to clerks. They are also responsible for the MyVote website, and the WesVote voter system in the state of Wisconsin. The MyVote website is the website where voters go to register to vote, request an absentee ballot, locate their polling place, et cetera. And the WesVote system is the system that clerks use. And that's the system that we use to enter voter registrations, follow up on absentee ballots, and do other election-related duties. And I'll talk a little bit more about both of those sites in these upcoming slides. So first, we'll start with some basics, important dates, deadlines, requirements. The first deadline that's coming up is going to be Wednesday, October 21. And that is the deadline for voters to register to vote either online at myvote.wi.gov, and by mail. After Wednesday, October 21, voters can only register to vote in person at their municipal clerk's office. And they can do that up until 5:00 PM on Friday, October 30. Voter registration is never permitted on the Saturday, Sunday, or the Monday preceding an election. Registration requirements. Voters that wish to register to vote must complete a Wisconsin voter registration application and provide a proof of residence document. The proof of residence document must contain the voter's current and complete name and their current and complete residential address. Common forms of proof of residence documents, in addition to a driver's license, would be a utility bill, a credit card statement, any type of government document, any type of document that has their full name and their complete address on it. It's oftentimes proof of residence and photo ID are confused. Proof of residence proves where the voter lives for the purpose of registering to vote. The photo ID proves who the voter is, proves their identity for the purpose of getting a ballot. So that's the difference between the two. All right. Absentee voting by mail procedures and deadlines. All absentee ballot requests must be made in writing. That again, can be done online, and it can also be done by completing a paper Wisconsin application for absentee ballot and returning that to the municipal clerk's office. Someone can also send a written request to the municipal clerk. That can be as simple as a letter or an email giving their name, their address, and the election that they wish to receive the absentee ballot for. Along with the written request, the voter must supply a copy of their photo ID. There are some exceptions to this rule. The exceptions would be military voters, permanent overseas voters, and what we call indefinitely confined voters. Those are the only three exceptions to providing photo ID. For this election, the last day for regular voters to request an absentee ballot by mail is 5:00 PM on Thursday, October 29. That is the statutory deadline. However, we don't encourage voters to wait that long. It does not give a lot of time for them to get the ballot completed and returned to us. For this election, so far, we have a new deadline for absentee ballots. As of today, all ballots must be postmarked on or before Election Day, November 3, and must be received by November 9. As I mentioned, this deadline is current as of today. It may or may not change. This was a deadline that came out of Judge Conley's decision that may be appealed. Methods of submitting absentee ballots. They can be submitted by mail. All of our absentee ballots that we mail out have return postage on them. Voters can also come to City Hall and deliver them in person to a staff member. And they can also be dropped in our secure drop box in front of the building. We have a silver drop box out front that's secured with tamper evidence seals. We do check the drop box and empty the drop box twice every weekday, and then once on each weekend day. Voters can also absentee vote in person. Absentee voting in person begins on Tuesday, October 20, and runs through until 5:00 PM on Friday, October 30. Integrity of this system. Security systems in person. I don't have a slide specific for in-person or voting at the polls, but I'll just kind of run through our procedure for voting at the polls. A few weeks prior to the election, I go to the county clerk's office and get a flash drive from her. That flash drive contains the election. I bring it back to City Hall, put it in the machine, and then I run a test of all of the voting equipment. It's usually done about a week prior to the election. After I complete the test, I seal the flash drive in the machine, and the machine is locked up, and then stored in my office until Election Day. On Election Day, I bring the machine out to the polling place. We plug it into the wall just for electricity. It's never connected to the internet. Turn it on. I enter the election codes that are specific to each election. Those are given to us by the county clerk. And then put the machine into voting mode. The machine stays in voting mode the entire day. When we close the polls, at that point, we switch the machine over to reporting mode, and that's when we print out the tape results. At that point, we also break the seals on the doors of the machine and remove all of the ballots, and we count them all. First, we count them by absentees, and then we count the regular ballots, so we get a total at the end to make sure that our total matches what's on the machine. After we have verified the ballot total, that it is the same as what is on the machine, then I modem the results through a wireless cell modem to the county clerk. After the moduming is completed, then I call her office and verify that she's gotten those results. Then the next day, I take down to the county to her office. I take the tape that was printed, the poll book, the inspector's statement, and I return the flash drive to her along with Cali sheets and some other election-related materials. So that's the procedure that we use on Election Day in terms of the integrity of the machine. On Election Day, we always have an inspector's statement where we track all of the seals that are put on the machine, the time that they are put on, the time that they're broken, and who removes them, and why they remove them. And that inspector's statement is also taken down to the county clerk with the rest of the material, and I keep a copy here as well. And that is an open record. So that's how we handle caring for the system and caring for the machine on Voting Day. We also have procedures for when voters come in to vote in person at City Hall, vote absentee. When the voters come in to City Hall, they follow the same procedure that they do at the polling place. They have to provide their photo ID. They have to state their name and address. The clerk or the staff member and helping the voter looks them up in the WesVote system and enters in a ballot request for that person. When they enter in the ballot request, then a label is printed off. That label is put on the envelope. The voter is given a ballot. They vote the ballot. They fold it up, place it in the envelope, conceal it, and bring it back to the staff member. The staff member watches them sign the outside of the envelope. When they enter that ballot request into the WesVote system, that assigns a unique number to that person into that ballot. So another ballot cannot be assigned to that person. After the staff member takes the ballot from the voter, they bring it back to my office where it's stored securely, locked up, and safe here until Election Day. One thing to note is that when I print the poll book the day before the election, if a person has voted absentee, that will be printed next to their name in the poll book. It will either say absentee ballot issued if the ballot was issued and never returned, or it will say absentee ballot returned if the ballot was indeed received by the time I print the poll book. That's very helpful for the election official that is working the poll book, because then if that a person should appear on Election Day, that signals them that they've already either requested a ballot or they've already actually voted a ballot. And then we can follow up with the voter. Absentee voting by mail. Security system is pretty similar to absentee voting in person. Here, again, the photo ID is required to be submitted with the absentee application. And again, the ballot request is entered into WesVote, and the ballot is assigned a unique number that is the same. But with the absentee voting by mail, there are two labels that are printed. One label goes on that interior envelope that eventually comes back to us, and then the other label goes on the outside envelope that we are mailing to the voter. On that outside envelope, in addition to the voter's name and address, there's also an intelligent male barcode, IMB. And that barcode is actually scanned at the post office. When the post office receives it in Milwaukee, they scan that barcode. And that will show up in MyVote. If the voter checks MyVote, they will see that the post office scanned it, and it will tell them exactly what date it was scanned. It will also give them an anticipated delivery date when the post office thinks that they will be able to the voter. Then when the voter gets the ballot and they vote the ballot and return it to us, there is not another intelligent male barcode on return trip. But when I receive it here in the office, I enter that unique number that's on that label into the WesVote system, and it shows then that I received, on MyVote, it shows that I have received the ballot here in the office. When I get them back and I record them, we also examine them at that time to make sure that everything is on the outside of that envelope. The voter's signature, the witness signature, and the witness address. If any one of those three things that are missing, that's when we contact the voter, let them know that they need to correct their certificate envelope or their ballot will not be counted. After we have ensured that the envelope is okay and it's been recorded into the WesVote system, then I store it here in the office, locked up. And again, that is printed on the poll book as well. When we've received the ballot here in the office, then it would be printed on the poll book that the absentee ballot was returned. Okay. Safety, security, disaster planning. In-person voting health precautions for voters. So this year has definitely been a unique year for elections. And in April and August, we came up with a plan on how to try to mitigate some of the problems that we might face with the pandemic. So how we have kind of followed the plan, we have followed the advice of the Elections Commission. We have a greeter stationed at the door on Election Day to help with line control, help with social distancing. We have signs up asking voters to either use the hand sanitizer that we have at the door for them, or wash their hands. We have marks on the floor to ensure that people have social distancing between them. And we are also making sure we sanitize surfaces, all the tables, booths, et cetera, everything that a voter might come in contact with. We also bought thousands of pens in April so that when a voter approaches the poll book, they are given their own pen to use to sign the poll book, and then they keep that pen with them, and they use that to vote the ballot. When they are done, they can either take it with them or throw it out, whichever they choose, but it is their pen to use, and only theirs. My main goal on Election Day is to limit the amount of time that voters spend in the polling place. My goal is to have a voter in and out within 10 minutes, if possible. I think keeping the time down is probably the best way and safest way to protect the voters and the poll workers and keep the process moving along. All right. So in-person voting health precautions for poll workers. Again, in November, we're gonna follow the same plan that we had in April and August. We'll provide masks, hand sanitizer, face shields if requested, and gloves if requested to our poll workers. As we did in August and April, offer them a chance to get up and actually wash their hands if they want to, instead of just using the hand sanitizer. We also have suspended plastic shower curtains from the ceiling in the polling place. The shower curtain is between the poll worker and the voter, leaving only about an inch at the bottom, between the bottom of the shower curtain and the table. That allows for the poll worker to slide the poll book underneath the shower curtain so that the voter can sign their name, or it allows them to slip the ballot underneath. And that was very, worked very well in April and August. The poll workers liked it because it was easy to see through. It was easy to hear through, and they felt quite protected by it. We also had it set up where we had a double width of tables, and that actually having two tables back-to-back was actually about a six-foot distance. So when the voter approaches the poll worker, they're standing on one side of two tables, and it's about six feet away from the poll worker. And then the shower curtain comes down between the two. We will also have an official assigned to cleaning regularly. As I said, they'll clean all the surfaces, the tables, the polling booths, door handles, other areas where people may have touched. Okay. Contingency staffing plans, absentee and male balloting. Other than myself in the office, there are four other employees who all have access and who have been trained in the WesVote system. They are all familiar with the system. A couple of them use it regularly, almost daily right now during election season. And that is the same system that they use to help voters who come in to vote in person absentee. They also know how to register to vote in that WesVote system, and also record ballots, et cetera. I still generally do most of the absentee by mail requests. However, they do help me with it. Every time I receive an absentee by mail request, it does come into my email. So I have given my email logins to two of the employees so that if I were ever out of the office and they needed to check my email to receive those absentee mail requests, they can do so. You can also see them in the WesVote system, but the email is a good reminder that there's an absentee request pending. There are also, in the WesVote system, there are also tutorials and directions for every WesVote task. It takes through every task step by step, very easy to understand, very clear. Especially even if you haven't done the particular task before, it's pretty easy to follow. So I've gone over those instructions with those two employees as well. There's also the county clerk. She's a very valuable resource. She is very experienced in WesVote. She does help smaller communities with their absentee requests and voter registrations in WesVote. So she uses it on a daily basis, and she could be a very valuable resource if I was unavailable and staff had a question on a WesVote task. Availability of personnel poll workers. So I did lose a number of poll workers in April and August. Or I should, maybe I shouldn't say lose, that just right now they're temporarily on a leave of absence from working as a poll worker. But I was encouraged recently by a number of people volunteering to work as a poll worker. Several county and state employees have offered to step up and help out. Right now, I have probably 15 new poll workers that I'll be training next week. With that in mind, I intend to staff very heavily for the November election, probably heavier than I need to, with the idea that if, if I should lose some of the poll workers, it won't be as damaging as if I were to have a small group and lose several poll workers. So my intent is to actually break the poll book into three for this election. I don't know that we would necessarily need it to be broken into three considering the volume of absentees we have had. But I think the extra staff will, number one, make the, the voting flow much smoother, much faster on Election Day. And two, it also provides us a little bit of that backup if we should lose a couple of them at the last minute. I can always take the poll book down to two if I need to. So that, that has been encouraging to have that kind of volunteer support. I also, as I usually do, try to keep city staff, what I call, on reserve. And that is not assign them a task in the polling place so that if I should get a last-minute cancellation or someone, a poll worker that can't make it, hopefully I have a city staff member here at City Hall that I can ask to come in at the last minute and step in. All of our city staff, City Hall staff here are trained in various parts of the election process. Some know how to do each job. Others know how to do two or three. But I'm pretty confident that any one of them could step in and help out at a moment's notice. There's also a minimum number of poll workers. The Elections Commission recommends to have at least seven poll workers, but the bare minimum would be three. I would never recommend having an election with just three poll workers, but if you absolutely had to, it could be done. In terms of, if you were in that sort of emergency situation where you were down to about three poll workers, I would strongly suggest contacting the county clerk. She keeps a list of poll workers that perhaps are on call, that have been trained, that could be available to come at short notice. In the April election, there were many small municipalities that were in that emergency situation, and they actually had National Guard members that came in and helped out. And so several of those now have been experienced and may or may not be available for, for the November election. But they may be out there and able to help too. So I think that is everything that I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Leanne, there should be a button at the top of the screen that's red that says Stop, Stop Share.
Yep, there we go.
I just had a quick question about, we're, we're limited to the number of people that can be in City Hall when we're, we're holding the election. If I recall, like in, in April, and I wasn't here in, like, present in August for it, but we had a limit of like 10 people, if I remember right, including voters. Is that about what you feel like it's gonna be this November to be able to keep the physical distancing? Or are you thinking about doing something different?
Yeah, I, that was a self-imposed restriction of 10 people. But I, I think that probably is not going to be realistic for this election, mainly just because of the fact that we will have to have a number of people processing absentees. And if we do break the poll book down into three, that is going to mean six people just on the poll book alone. So no, 10, 10 people. So no, ten, ten people probably is not realistic for this election. If we want to keep people moving through the polling place, we're going to need more poll workers to help, help with that process.
So what do, what are you thinking as far as how that'll work with keeping the six feet apart, like everybody's six feet apart?
Well, as we did with the April and the August, we had people, we had the, well, for example, the poll book workers. They're sitting at opposite ends of the table. And they keep their distance from the ends of the table, but they both have to get up at some point and like view the photo ID, et cetera. And they do have to be within reasonable amount of distance so they can hear each other and hear the voter together. So it worked out well in April and August. They felt comfortable with it, I felt comfortable with it. We also have some space in between the tables, but that's the plan for, for November.
So I just want to make sure I understand it, so when people ask me, because I've been getting a lot of questions about whether it's safe to vote in person. And so we will be able to maintain six feet of distance between like voters coming in and poll workers and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do the same as we did for April and August, and that's where the greeter at the door will help us with line control in terms of how many people and keeping them spaced as they're waiting.
And then will there be like a road, like a rotation of poll workers, or will the same poll workers be here all day long?
No, there will be two shifts of poll workers. So there'll be a morning shift. Those people will work like 6:30 to 1:30 and then the afternoon shift starts at 1:30 until we're finished for the day.
And then are we going to be asking the screening questions of the poll workers?
Yes, yep, I do talk to them about that before every election, yep.
And so, and I just want to make sure that we're understanding, when I say screening questions, I mean the COVID screening question.
Right.
And so everybody else understands, I'm sorry, I should have said the COVID screening question.
Yep.
So how do we, do we, and it's, so I understand it, do we send them like a questionnaire the day before? Or we ask them the screening questions the day of, or how does that work with the screening questions?
I sent them all to them about a week before so they, so they would have the questions. And then I had them get back to me closer to the election and then also they have my cell phone number so that if the day before something comes up, they know how to get ahold of me then too.
Okay, that's helpful.
Leanne, I had a question regarding the governor's announcement of the twenty-five percent in public places. I suppose the person at the door will kind of monitor that, right?
Right, they're going to be in charge of, yeah, of line control and how many people they allow in at a time.
Are we going to be doing anything outside the building?
Well, they may, it may, the line may reach outside of the building, that's possible. That's why we're going to try to keep them moving through as quickly as possible so that it doesn't get too long. I'll know a little bit better probably by the week prior to the election, how many voters perhaps expect. As of right now, we have issued one thousand one hundred and twenty-two absentee ballots.
And how many have returned so far, do you know?
Five seventy-seven, so that's about fifty-one and a half percent.
So I don't know.
And Larry just, oh, sorry.
We've been trying to share that number on social media. I don't know how often Leanne is giving it to Inga, but we're trying to kind of encourage people by sharing the number of absentee votes that have returned. So people are kind of reminded like, hey, if you requested your absentee vote, you know, this is how many we have out, this is how many have returned. Al?
I was just going to say, to Larry's question, the governor's order does, does give an exemption for polling places in terms of the indoor twenty-five percent gathering, just so you're aware.
And Linda, were you asking if we were going to do anything outside of the building? Like, like markers for six feet of distance? I think we did that in previous, but.
Yeah.
Leanne, if you wanted to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I missed that of your question. Yeah, we have markings all the way down the sidewalk for the six feet, yep.
And do we, do we have, I mean, I knew, I know we used to, but I can't remember. How many like city staff are you counting on for this election? Like in April, we had a lot of city staff because it was new. But are we planning on having mostly the new volunteers? And, and then like city staff would be backups for the November election, am I understanding that, like?
Right, yeah, primarily. I always use some, some city staff for voter registration. But other than that, I won't be using city staff for working the poll book or the ballot table, et cetera, like we did in April. So yeah, city staff would be backup to, to the other poll workers, yes.
Yeah, and I don't know if you had this in your presentation, and I, there was a lot. If I missed it, is, are you anticipating like having all city staff in to help out with absentee voting? I know right now Al and Inga, you know, are available to come in and like be separate, you know, we're still doing the two teams. So we had talked about previously that if you needed extra help with in-person absentee voting, we could have Al and Inga come in every day, but just not have their location be in the City Hall area.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that more this week and thinking perhaps it would be better if we kept them out of the mix, so to speak, for right now. I think we will probably be able to do absentee voting, the three of us. We have also had another employee who works over in the police department offer to come and help as well. And we have the third window here at City Hall where that person could sit in that cubicle too. So I'm still working through that, but my goal would, would be to keep Al and Inga perhaps out of the office if we could because then that keeps them separate from us in the case of something, one of us becoming ill or something and not being able to work.
Yeah, I guess I would anticipate that they would still be in on Thursdays like usual, though I, that wasn't my understanding that they would be out of the office until the election, though.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know, I guess we haven't firmly discussed all of that, but I, I didn't, I didn't want to leave one person in charge of absentee voting on a Thursday. That, that probably isn't going to work out. So maybe we'll have to talk about that a little more in detail. I wouldn't want Inga to be the only one here to handle absentee voting. Because I think it's going to be more than one person can handle.
Especially the Thursday before the election.
Yeah, well, I would anticipate like Al and Inga would, I mean, here is my concern, I don't want to put other departments short-staffed and poll personnel from other departments first, I think, I think we should put that on Al and Inga. And not put that on necessarily other departments, but that's certainly a conversation that we can, that we can have at a different time. Does anybody else have any other questions? I'll just go around like I usually do. Larry, any further questions?
No, I don't, I just, the reason I brought the twenty-five percent, I appreciate Al filling me in on the fact that we have exemption. But given the rate that we're having in Rock County right now and personal circumstances for myself, I want to try to avoid as much exposure as I can for the people coming in.
Linda?
Well, I think that you did an awesome job with this presentation, there was a lot of information.
Thank you, Linda.
It was definitely good and I appreciate you, you filling us in on all this. I've worked the polls before, but I don't think that, I don't think that we could do that anymore.
Not when you're on the ballot, but.
Teresa?
You know, it was a terrific presentation and I, I think it's an overwhelming job for everyone. So I appreciate everything that everyone's putting into it. I put our ballots in the mail today, so we're covered. My husband's in mine, so thank you.
Well, we can add two to that number soon then.
There you go.
Devin?
It was a great presentation, thank you for putting your time into that. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thanks.
Ryan?
I don't have any questions or comments, it was a good presentation though.
Thanks.
Bill?
No questions, just wish we had had the news media to cover this so that the information can get out to more people.
We actually have the Town of Harmony clerk and the Town of Milton clerk and the Town of Johnstown clerk. And I have all contacted Becky at the Courier to do some sort of joint article that might provide information kind of to all of the townships, so that hopefully will come out soon too. And thank you, Bill, for helping me, you know, plug my information into the PowerPoint you helped so, and for the outline, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Very welcome.
And I took some pictures of the slides, so I can share some of those on social media too. And we can always also submit the presentation to the paper or whatever to get the word out. So I think that was very, very helpful and I'm glad that we're asking screening questions of our poll workers and we're mindful of everybody's safety. Hopefully we don't have a huge line of people waiting outside. I hope we have good weather, that we could have the doors open like we did in April. So I appreciate that and we'll have further conversations on staffing and, you know, all of those other things, last-minute details. Do we, we, I'm assuming we have enough masks and hand sanitizer ordered?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be getting some more from the county clerk when I go to pick up the other supplies from her that I need. She has quite a stash, so I'll get some additional from her.
Excellent. Okay, I'm going to move on to number seven. If there aren't any further questions for Leanne and let her get back to counting absentee returns or whatever she does.
Good, now perhaps stand for the Casey's item and then I'll, I'll go on after that.
Thanks, Leanne.
Yep.
Number seven, discussion possible action regarding change of premises application for Casey's General Store nineteen ninety, number nineteen ninety-two, four sixty-four South Palm Hall Road.
So Leanne can certainly jump in since she's sticking around. So this item is different from the one that was on our last agenda. This is for the change of premise for their existing Class A beer and wine, or beer license. So as you may recall from our conversation two weeks ago, there was kind of some confusion as to what the request was. And what was on the agenda two weeks ago was simply the request for a new Class A retailer's license for intoxicating liquor. In talking with the folks from Casey's who were on the phone at that time, as well as the memo from Leanne Schrader, our clerk, they had indicated that they would like to change the premise for their existing Class A beer license, but that wasn't on the agenda last week. So this item, number seven specifically, is for the change of premise for their existing Class A beer license. Does that make sense, or did I make it more confusing? The next item on the agenda is the same one that we saw two weeks ago, but I wanted to make that very clear distinction. That item number seven is simply for a change of premise to allow their existing Class A beer license to encompass their entire property as to allow for curbside pickup.
Would that change anything with the limits that were set on their advertising before?
No.
I have a question about the parking situation. We are, my understanding is what they would like to do is drive up and have people drive up and then the store people can bring them out their beer, is that correct?
That's my understanding. I know Melissa Frank is on, Leanne, is that your understanding as well?
That was my understanding, that changing the premise to include the parking lot then would allow them to do that, to have curbside pickup, yes.
Correct.
I just wanted to be sure that I understood that that's exactly what the change of premise is for. Now, as far as the parking goes, when we did the original site plan on Casey's, I'm sure that there were requirements based on their pumps and their building and all of that kind of thing that required a specific amount of parking. So how, where do people go? Where do they go to drive up?
Well, I would, I would imagine they would pull into a parking stall similar to what you do at Target or the Milton Mercy Pharmacy, you know, you just pull up into a parking stall. I don't think they, I don't think it's, I don't think their intent is to have a drive up in the traditional sense like you would at a restaurant. Believe, I believe, and Melissa can jump in, that you would pull into a stall and maybe through the app indicate your make and model of vehicle or something to that effect.
Yep, that's exactly what it does, yep. Once you get there, you just go onto the app and let them know that you're there, you let them know what your vehicle color and model is and then they will bring it out.
I mean, that's how they do it at Target, I'm well-versed in that now.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go through all the council members for questions and comments. Larry, any questions or comments?
No, I have none, thank you.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
Yes, you know, this still seems very out of character in terms of how we sell liquor and how we deliver it. And I was looking through the Wisconsin alcohol booklet and what they established. And, you know, you get to it and it says, "With limited exceptions, all retailers of alcohol beverages may only sell to customers who are physically at the licensed premises." For example, customer phones in to order pizza and holds a license and they must be physically present to pick up their packaged liquor. And, you know, it just doesn't make sense. And they gave me the example that if someone was physically disabled and required bringing that out to their car because of that, it made a difference, but not to just run it out like you're delivering pizza. You know, it just, I, I don't get it that you would run this out and somebody's sitting in a car and hands you a driver's license that shows eighteen. You know, it, it just doesn't show that you have the ability to show that legality and that there aren't sixteen-year-olds in the car and they're, I'm just not buying it. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Devin?
I have no questions or comments.
Brian?
I have no questions or comments either.
Bill?
I think that the change of premise, you know, this, this item essentially says the parking lot is part of that premises. And, you know, as such, it would be legal to do this. It's just that we're saying the premise includes some stuff that's not structure.
But do you, where do you see this happening, Bill? Do you, do you find people on Merchant Row running their alcohol out to their cars? I've never seen it before.
I believe it is happening in, in some other. I believe it is happening in, in some other locales. It's not something I make use of. If I have a beer a week, that's a lot for me. So I'm not an experienced visitor to this kind of framework. But I, I, I think that the framework is legal and with COVID, there's been a whole lot of additional bring it out to the car kinds of services that have been offered.
Do you think that that is a service that we need to have with the high schools' new construction being as close to that location? I mean, we don't even have liquor stores. It, Piggly Wiggly doesn't even, they don't even carry out theirs. I mean, and I-
Yeah, Piggly Wiggly does. I don't know whether they're supposed to or not, but they do.
They carry out alcohol?
Believe they do.
Are you referring to like they'll bring alcohol out to the, the car?
Drive up to the door.
Oh, okay.
Guess maybe that's something that we were not aware of. In any case, the, having the, having a drive up on that side of town in an, on a main road that is driving out of town. Do you not think that maybe that might put a little strain on our police officers? And then I was also, when I was looking through the information that we sent, that we were given, I noticed that there's a scanning system in place. So what happens with the scanning system and your alcohol sales?
Each store, well, there's only one here in town here that I have, they have an iPad that they can scan. There's an app on it that they can scan the ID to make sure that the ID is not fake, to make sure that it's valid, not expired, the person is of age. And if they are not, they will scan the ID before they ever take the alcohol out if the person chooses not to come in the store. But most of our curbside is food. I don't think we've had anybody that has done the alcohol curbside wise anywhere. I have 12 stores and I don't think anybody has had anybody do alcohol curbside because they, they can get online and they can order. If they are at work or something, they can order alcohol and when they get there, they have to come inside. We scan their ID just like normal. But I don't, I mean, on the iPad, we do have an app that they take the iPad outside with them. They can scan the person's ID, make sure it's the actual person. They have all this training that they're going through for all of this right now.
I saw the training and it looks like you do a really good job with your training, but then what happens with, to this information? Is this sent on to the police department? Or if you get it, if you run into somebody that's trying to do something and heading out of town, does that go directly to our police department? Or any of your stores in those areas?
That I really, I, I don't know. I mean, if it comes up as a fake ID, we would keep the ID, call the police department. If it's not the person on the ID, we would call it. So yeah, I guess it would go towards your police department because any issues that we had with the carding or the IDs would go to the local police department, whichever town.
Is that kind of what happens now? Like if somebody comes into the store with a fake ID?
Yes, I just actually had this issue in Whitewater. It's a college town and it's, they are now printing IDs that scan. But because the training that the people at my stores have been through, they knew what to look for on the ID, even though it does scan. There's different things on these scanable IDs that you can tell that it's a fake ID and they have kept the IDs and they call the police. Usually the person takes off before the police get there, but.
I don't know where it is that is the best place to, to, to make these comments or not, but I have been given some information. I, I will tell you that I've heard from two people that said, no, I don't like this idea at all. And one of them, one of them sent me to the CDC. I attempted to scan all this for you guys and send it to you and it didn't work. I'm sorry. But there's some things that I just want to point out. And this is Julie Sherman, who's the coordinator of Wisconsin Alcohol Policy Project. There's compelling research showing that clusters and over-concentration of alcohol outlets increase alcohol-related disorders and crime in the community. Now, I got this list of all of our licenses, as everybody else did. And I'm just kind of wondering, at what point is there going to be a limit here?
But just, just to be clear, this item is, this item is the change of premise for their existing license. So we're not looking to, it's the next item with, that they're looking to expand, so.
But we're opening their space. We're giving them more space. They will have the whole lot. Is that correct?
Correct. The premise would be expanded to include the entire parking lot.
The entire parking lot? I'm, I'm not, I don't like this idea. I don't like the idea of driving up to a gas station and having somebody bring out beer. It's just especially, it's too close to the schools. And the drive up, just as far as I'm concerned, it just creates more problems. We already have a busy intersection there.
Okay, Chief Parker, did you want to comment?
I just want to jump in here for a second. I have a question for you, Melissa. Do your, do your staff go through any training that would be helpful in circumstances where they are bringing the beer out to the car and have a, and there's a car full of people who don't look like they're of age, even though the person making the purchase is? How, how is your staff taught to handle that?
Um, I don't think we have that training out quite yet. Like the most, most that they've done the training on, I think, is just being able to identify fake IDs and things like that. Or if someone is intoxicated, the refusal to sell them alcohol. But I mean, I don't know what they've put in for, if it's a person over 21 driving, but yet there is a car full of minors. I don't think there's training on that yet.
It might be something to consider to, you know, with some of the concerns that have been brought up. This, it could provide an opportunity that doesn't, hasn't existed before, that you're able to get a fuller picture of who's being provided this alcohol. So right now, someone could go into Casey's and buy that and walk to a car full of people who are underage with nobody's knowledge at all and off they go. So it's a, it's a thought that might bear consideration if this does pass tonight to, to help your staff maybe talk through that a little bit.
Oh, I will definitely bring that up with my boss when I get off this meeting.
Did, I, you know, there was the police department that was invoked a number of times in the last few minutes. Is there any questions for me that I can help answer?
I, yeah.
Teresa?
Well, I just think that we have a responsibility in the message that we, we send. And, you know, I don't know if Al has any comments, but from, and I believe Larry was there too, from a training that we went to with representatives throughout Rock County a couple of years ago. And, you know, that, that what we're communicating to people in our communicating, uh, community is very strong in, in, by the licensure that we're sending out and we need to be careful of what we're doing. So I don't know. Al or Larry, were you there too?
Yeah, I know what Teresa's referring to. It was, in fact, Linda referenced the organization that put it on. And, and it was all the clerks from Rock County plus a handful of other public officials. And the talking about the proliferation of alcohol and the availability of alcohol within our state, really, and how pervasive it is and the impact that it has on a number of socioeconomic factors, as well as crime statistics and things of that nature. And, and, you know, there, it was, the information presented was really in, in terms of, hey, municipalities have discretion for, for a reason. And, and, you know, they were advocating that those, that municipalities take that discretion and, and use it to limit or, or, you know, try to decrease the proliferation. Does that sound about right?
Yes, yes.
Larry, did you have any further comments?
I did. I'll just use myself as an example, not that I'm doing this, but I appreciated the chief's comment. But here's the situation. I pull up with a carload of minors. I go in and I buy a 36-pack of beer and I bring it back to my car and off we go. Because the clerk in the store doesn't know that I have a carload of minors waiting outside for me. Whereas the on-premise gives some control to the store, to the distributor, in that they walk out, oh, there's a carload of minors. So I'm just trying to say that there's two ways of looking at this. You have a chance to intervene where you might not have had a chance to intervene if it was sold at, inside the premises. I just wrote that out for words.
Okay, well, um, I think we've heard from everyone that has wanted to speak. Is there anybody that didn't speak before that has a comment or a question? Then I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Bill's motion to approve the request to expand Casey's premises. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Ryan has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Bill, Larry and Ryan saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Linda, Teresa and Devon are opposed. Oh, well, that's that, I guess. So I'm assuming Mark Schrader, I have to break this tie?
That's correct.
Well, I'm going to vote in favor of it with the idea that this possibly actually gives us more eyes on who we are selling to and who was in that vehicle. And I'm hopeful that Milton, as in many ways, can be an example of actually taking care of our, our youth and making sure that if you're 21 and you're purchasing alcohol, that it's only going to be consumed by 21-year-olds. And if you, you know, have a, a car full of kids, that I would encourage Casey's that they do that training and take measures to add to our kids' safety. So I'm going to vote in favor. So I hope that, that Casey's will follow that and maybe that we can be an example for other communities that look towards doing this. So that motion is approved. Item number eight, discussion impossible action regarding an application for a Class A retailer's license. Intoxicating liquor for consumption away from the premises were sold from Casey's Marketing Company, Casey's General Store, number 992, located at 464 South John Paul Road.
So this is the item that was on the agenda two weeks ago. So folks remember what the request was at that time. Was to grant Casey's a new Class A license that would also include, or that would include the sale of intoxicating liquor for consumption away from premises. So currently Casey's has a Class A beer license and they would like to also hold a Class A intoxicating liquor license as well. So this would be a new license that would add on to their, potentially add on to their inventory to be more than just beer. Is that correct, Leanne?
Yes, correct. And this has, this has the premise also that includes the store and the parking lot.
Right, yep, good point. So this is the same conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago when there was some confusion about it. So I just wanted folks to kind of remember, hearken back to two weeks ago, even though it feels like it was two years ago, which is pretty much every week now. I don't know if there's anything else that we can add from staff, but.
Okay, I'll just go around like usual. Bill, any questions or comments?
I guess my only question and concern, and it's an overall one. You know, I, I don't like the proliferation of, of outlets either. But by the same token, I think we have to be consistent. And I think there is a question in terms of saying no to one legal operator who's operating in good faith if we say no to others. And, you know, I, I don't think that we've necessarily done a good job of, of doing that. And consequently, I, I plan to vote yes on this one. Not because I think it's great to have lots and lots of liquor stores around. I wish there were fewer. But I think that we're talking about a legal business and businesses in good standing asking to be able to extend their product line.
Ryan, thank you, Bill.
Pretty much agree with what Bill said. So you kind of laid it out well. So I have another comment.
Okay, Devon?
I have no comments.
Teresa?
Well, I agree about being consistent, Bill, but it should be consistent the other way. We should be consistent in supporting our businesses that have been in effect. And, you know, as I pointed out last time, nine places in about a half mile selling liquor, just don't cut it. So, all right.
Thank you. Linda?
I think that this might just be a little premature. I would actually like to see how this outdoor expanded area turns out before I offer any more alcohol. Because I, from what I understand, you're saying that that would also be something that they could take outside. Yes, okay. Well, as I pointed out the last time, I feel like any of our alcohol licenses should be not, not in such a grouped area. You know, Teresa's made a very good point. I mean, we've got now, we've got two places across the street from each other that are going to be doing the same thing. And they're both right next to the high school. And, you know, what we're doing here by allowing this to happen without even checking out this other, this other item that we have already approved, I feel like we're tying the hands of future councils. How many liquor licenses do you want in the city? Maybe that's what we should do. Maybe we should take a poll of our voters. How many people want to have alcohol, hard liquor allowed in the city and what kind of places do they expect to find them? You know, I'm still, I'm still planning on a nice hotel coming into town. I don't know about anybody else. But should we not be thinking about the things that we- know about anybody else, but should we not be thinking about the things that we would like to have come in the city and be ready for? I just, I feel like this is way too premature, and especially because we just passed the other one where they are allowed to have the whole lot as a place to sell liquor. I just feel like, let's, let's give this a year. I'm sure that that's not too much to ask. Would it be, Melissa? And then let's just see how it goes. Let's, you know, give us some time to soak up this first one. Make sure that it's going to work for us the way that we want to.
Okay, I, Bill, I saw that you had your hand raised, and I'll come back to you after I go for Barry.
I really don't have any comments. I think everybody presented arguments for and against. If we're going to have conversations about strengthening our policies or changing our policies, I feel that this application was made in good faith, and we haven't had those discussions. So I want to be sure we're voting on the policies that are in place, not the policies we'd like to have in place. But just offer that as a vote. Thank you.
Thanks. Bill, you had another comment, and then Linda, you had another comment.
My comment was, was, you know, building off of the, you know, hotel comes into town. You know, that speaks to the consistency kind of thing, you know, in terms of licenses. Now, it'd be a different kind of license, I understand. I don't think we're going to have a hotel that's going to want to provide curbside liquor service or beer service for that matter. However, you know, it seems as if, if a wanted development comes into town, there's one set of rules, and sometimes for others, there may be another set of rules. And, you know, I would seriously consider the idea of limitations that have been imposed in other days as far as population. But I'd really like to see consistency in terms of what is the reason we're saying yes or no in terms of the legalities of the situation.
Linda, and then Ryan.
Well, I guess my, I have to respond to Bill on this one. How many of those places do you want to be gas stations? Because that's what we're talking about, is a gas station. It's, it's not a, it's not a bar. It's, it's a gas station. And how many other gas stations do we have in town? What are you going to do when Arts decides that they want to sell wine? Give them a Class A, too? I mean, we, yes, there has to be consistency. But I don't want anybody to forget. We are Milton. We don't have to do what everybody else does. We can be better. Now, I thought that we also had, and Al, you can help me out with this, I thought that we did have restrictions on how many Class As that we could do.
There is not a restriction that's issued by state statute. Local municipalities have the discretion to create their own local ordinance or own local provisions and that would limit the number of Class A licenses if they so choose. We don't have that at this time. At one point several years ago, there was something along those lines, but then there was a deviation made for Quick Trip, I believe, and that's when things kind of started to unravel. So that was like twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, something like that. There's, it was right around the time, right before I came or right as I was coming. So I don't know, have the whole history of it, but that's my recollection at least.
Now, this would be the first gas station, though, in town to be selling other...
It would be the first gas station that would be selling hard liquor, yes. The Milton, the former Milton Travel Mart had a Class A beer license, and the current East Side Quick Trip has a beer license.
A beer? Not a Class A, though, right?
Well, there's a Class A fermented malt beverage license, and there's a Class A intoxicating liquor license. So the East Side Quick Trip has a Class A fermented malt beverage license, and so did the former Milton Travel Mart. No current gas stations have a Class A intoxicating liquor license. The only two of those that are issued, I'm sorry, now three, that are issued in the city of Milton is now the Dollar General, Cowley's Piggly Wiggly, and the Beverage Mart.
Right. We had one on each side.
Quick Trip situation is exactly what I was referring to, because things were changed for Quick Trip because we wanted Quick Trip. And a license was given. Casey's came in shortly thereafter and was denied a license, you'll recall. Subsequently, they were given a license. But we had a new kid in town coming in. A license was granted because we really wanted their business here, and we said no to an existing business that had been here for a considerable period of time. That's the consistency that I'm talking about. I'd like to see us achieve some consistency, one way or another, but we need to treat law-abiding businesses that are trying to make a living fairly across the board. That's all.
Does that include small businesses, though? Because we have a full downtown right now.
Okay, so Linda, I'm going to go to Ryan.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Most, was gonna actually say what Bill was saying, but I think that we need to be consistent here. We went forward and let the Dollar General have one. Their, Casey's was up first on the agenda last time before the Dollar Generals did. So this should have been something in a way we should maybe discuss more for Dollar General if we were against the idea of adding more, because we knew this was going to potentially, potentially come back. And for consistency sakes, I think it would, doesn't make sense for us to deny this if we let Dollar General have theirs for the consistency. Otherwise, run into similar problems we've had before, when we allow one place to have it but not the other, and changed our ordinances and stuff. We used to have a hard limit. That didn't work out because we violated that. So we created this, these set of standards that are part of the memo that we got, that lists all the standards of how, what things we should use to approve or deny that. And there are some areas, you know, yes, they're close to high school and stuff, but the Dollar General is also kind of close to high school. If there's going to be a push to try to deny it, then we need to make sure it follows those standards that we had put in place. Otherwise, we're putting ourselves in the same hole we were in just a couple of years ago. But I think for consistency, since you let the Dollar General have one, it makes sense that we should also approve this one, too, just to be consistent throughout.
So just for clarification, council already voted...
We can't hear you.
Just for clarification, council voted to give Dollar General a Class A intoxicating liquor license for consumption away. That's correct. I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. Okay, so we already, you already voted to do that for Dollar General. Teresa, I want to come to you because you haven't made more than one comment.
You have, you keep changing the consistency. When we talked about consistency, when we talked with Casey's at the time, we told them it would just be for malt beverages. We would not grant them liquor licensure. Now we've changed that. You voted to approve a liquor license for Dollar General last time. Now you feel the need to vote for that for Casey's now. You keep upping the ante. How long do you think it will be before the others come back and ask for, well, you gave it to them, now we needed a Quick Trip?
Right.
Come on, you guys. You're changing the licensure.
Opening a can of worms here. Every gas station in town is going to come to us. And everybody's going to think that they're going to get it because they got it, and they got it. I'm sorry, I won't say anymore.
Well, we understand that our elected officials care about their community.
Well, that's the problem.
I appreciate that. So please don't apologize for caring. It's better to have a thoughtful discussion than to not have a discussion at all. So anybody else, one last time before I ask for a motion? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny the request. Would you like for me to give you my list?
No, I just want you to make the motion just as clean as possible.
Okay, well...
Do they, do they need to, I'm sorry, before you make your motion, Attorney Schrader, do they need, if Linda's going to make a motion to deny, does she need to state the reason for denial as part of her motion?
No, she can make the motion for denial if there's a second. Then in the ensuing discussion, it would be appropriate, and I'd say necessary, to state the basis for that. As Ryan pointed out, there's criteria that's provided for in the ordinance, and then so it would be appropriate to cite to that.
And I guess I'll just end my motion there. I make the motion to deny the request for a Class A liquor license.
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. So, Linda, what are the reasons related to the ordinance?
The first reason would be the proximity to other establishments, and then the, another one would be compatibility with the neighborhood, and I'm going to cite the high school on that. And then... That's it.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, all those in favor of denying the Class A retail license and intoxicating liquor for consumption away from the premises were sold from Casey's, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So there's three in favor and three opposed. Well, you know, I'm going to vote in favor of it because we have already, you know, voted to do this for Dollar General. And I think we're going to get ourselves in trouble if we aren't consistent with this. And we, this is the situation we're in. And so I vote in favor to be consistent. And, you know, I won't be surprised if Quick Trip comes back.
I'm sorry, Anissa, are you, are you voting in favor of the motion to deny the application?
No, I'm voting opposed. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
I'm voting opposed to deny the application. Did I say that again?
So the, the motion failed?
Yeah, the motion failed.
Okay.
Motion to deny the application failed on a four to three vote. So now there would need to be another motion made, or we could table the item, I guess, too.
I'll move to approve.
Ryan?
I'll second that. But I, can we have a discussion quick?
Yep.
I just want to say that maybe we should add in a stipulation that it has the same stipulations as the Class A fermented malt liquor license, so as in signage, pertaining to signage and stuff like that.
I can live with that.
That way the two licenses kind of match in that extent?
So what, what Ryan is referring to, for the folks who may not know, I don't think Bill was around for that, and Devon certainly wasn't. As part of the granting of the Class A fermented malt beverage license, there, there was a stipulation put on that license that there shall be no outside advertising for fermented malt beverages that face the streets. So in essence, they couldn't put it on their marquee, they couldn't put signs in the windows that face the street, so there'd be no exterior signage. So I believe what Ryan is saying is that, that same stipulation would apply for the intoxicating liquors as well. So it wouldn't be on the marquee, it couldn't be Bacardi's signs in the front window, or, you know, big pirate out front or something, I don't know.
And we, we did that with Dollar General.
We did.
That was part of...
So I can, I will amend my motion to include Ryan's.
And Ryan, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Any other comments? Yes, Linda?
Does everybody think that this is really compatible to the properties in the immediate area? I mean, we do have a list here. We do have a list here.
Anybody else? All right. All those in favor of granting the license with the conditions? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of it. So that motion does carry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What I would like to ask is that for future discussion, that we would, as a council, visit our policy and have further discussion on it in the near future as to whether we want to limit the number of licenses, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's, it's good business for us to review that policy at some point.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I have to move on to number nine. Discussion and possible, possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for 401K properties located at six forty-five College Street.
So this is a conditional use permit for a new business that will be opening, potentially opening, at six forty-nine College Street. 401K Properties is also part of the ownership arrangement for TLC Restorations. From what I understand, this would be a separate business entity. I don't think it'll be called TLC Restorations, but they are looking to open a retail establishment at six forty-five College Street, which for the folks who've been around town a long time, this is the former Captain Clean Building over on College Street. In the conditional use aspect of it is, the owner, Bob Rippenberger, would like to sell a small number of vehicles in this location as well. So he's going to develop a retail establishment with an internal showroom, and that would be the automobile sales component of it. Retail establishments are permitted use within the B-three zone district, so if he was only going to go that route, he wouldn't need to request a conditional use permit. The auto sales are a conditional use permit within the B-three zone district. So this was reviewed earlier today by the Plan Commission. They reviewed not only the conditional use permit, but also the site plan for his renovations, which I included in the packet as well. And they approved the site plan and forwarded a favorable recommendation on the conditional use permit to the common council with additional language that indicated no automobiles would be stored outside. And during that conversation, certainly Larry Howie and Anissa can jump in. Bob was, was very glad to accept that, as he indicated some of the vehicles he'll be selling would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, so there'd be no way he'd ever store them outside anyways. So what he plans to do is kind of fix up the front half of the building to be a showroom for these kind of collector vehicles, but also have a retail component in that as well. He plans to do some nice kind of external renovations to that building, as you can see in those renderings. What's on the council agenda tonight is only the conditional use permit portion of that request, the auto sales portion of it. As the site plan was approved by the, by the Plan Commission earlier today, there was two residents who spoke at the Plan Commission public hearing. One simply had questions, didn't have a, didn't give an indication whether he was in support or opposed to it, and the other, who was a direct neighbor, indicated that he was in support of it. There was talk about parking in the area and whether this may increase the parking situation over there. And as kind of talked about with the Plan Commission, because this is such a specialty location, it's highly unlikely that there would be more than one or two customers there at any time. So that they don't, we, we all kind of agreed that it likely wouldn't add to any, any perceived parking burden on that side of town. So I think that probably summarizes the entirety... So, I think that probably summarizes the entirety of the conversation. Plan Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation for the conditional use permit application.
I would move, let me see, we're moving for approval of the conditional use permit for 645 College Street.
Linda, are you seconding it? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, Mark, wait, wait.
I'll let Mark go first.
And Bill, does that include then the condition that was mentioned in the presentation of, with no autos to be stored outside?
That's fine. That, fine for the second, or?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Good meeting.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Well, that motion carried. Item number 10. Discussion and possible action on final resolutions 2024 regarding assessments for the lift station sanitary sewer main installation along Parkview Drive.
So earlier this summer, in one of our many assessment conversations, the common council approved final resolution 202020, and I remember stumbling over that back then as well, and that was for the assessments for the lift station project along Parkview Drive. Those assessments were levied, notices were sent to the affected property owners, I think there was only four of them in this case. And we had contact with the YMCA, and they asked if they could potentially pay the assessment in installments. And in order to do so legally, we would need to include installment language within the final resolution. And when resolution 202020 was adopted, it didn't have the provision for installments available within it. Sometimes we have that provision in there, and sometimes we don't, just depends on the nature of the assessment and the cash flow, really, of, of the financing of it. In this case, with the YMCA's request, we had a conversation with the YMCA, as well as Dan Nelson and Mark Langer and Attorney Schrader, and understood their predicament that they were in, in terms of their cash flow, and were able to put together a new final resolution 202024, which would allow for assessments to be paid in installments as so long as there is not a developer's agreement that would supersede that, which was the case with Red Hawk Apartments. Just for sake of reference, Red Hawk Apartment has already paid their assessments anyways, so. So this would apply to the remaining three properties. It's very likely that the other two remaining properties will enter into a developer's agreement at some time in which we can discuss whether we would want to allow for installments or make those payments come due at the time. But in terms of the YMCA, they would be allowed to submit for installment payments of, to spread out their assessment for five years. So that's the purpose of this resolution, is to assist the YMCA in their cash flow needs during the pandemic. And we talked with two of their board members and thought it was a very fruitful conversation and completely understood where they were coming from, and thought it was an opportunity to be a good partner, community partner with one of our strong community nonprofits.
Teresa?
I just have a question about where we're at financially with that property across the street. You had mentioned that we're, where we're at, where we're supposed to be with the Red Hawk Apartments.
Red Hawk Apartments paid their assessment, yep. They already paid it, yeah.
And what about the rest of it, though?
The rest of it is, they have a non-use deferment, because it's still an ag use, similar to the top of the hill, where Mike Pierce still owns the land up there. Both of those remaining two properties, the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill, still would have a non-use deferment. At the time that their assessment would become due, they could enter into an installment arrangement with the City of Milton if we so choose, but it's very likely that they would enter into some sort of developer's agreement as that land would be developed, which would then really outline the roles and responsibilities of the assessment at that time.
When is it due?
Once the land is subdivided or developed.
So it's still up to Mike?
Up to Mike Pierce?
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
Ultimately, yeah, yeah. I mean, if he wanted to subdivide it himself, the assessment would come due for whatever portion he would want to subdivide. More likely or not, he would sell that off to a developer who had then subdivided, and the assessment would come due at that time.
So I just, I don't want us to get too far off of the topic, because, you know, Mark will get mean.
All right, oh, I don't mean to.
No, I understand. So I'll just go around, Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ryan?
Nope, no questions.
Devin? There you are. Teresa, are you good? Okay. Linda?
Okay.
And Larry?
Question.
Okay. So, so everybody understands what the proposal is? Ryan, you had your hand up, or no, you're just?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, you're gonna make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Make motion to approve resolution 2020-24 authorizing payment of special assessment in installments.
Linda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action regarding routes to recovery reimbursement.
So as part of the routes to recovery, one of the permitted uses of those funds is reimbursement for costs associated with mitigating COVID, and that can be related to employees as well. So as outlined in the memo, what we have proposed here is a hazard reimbursement, for lack of a better term, for employees who were working during the COVID pandemic, or it's still going on, obviously, but really, we're talking about the safer at home time. As outlined in the memo, there are 12 sworn officers that would be eligible based on the initial language from the roads to recovery. Subsequently, that language has been expanded to basically include any public employee. So another option would be to provide that to the sworn officers, as well as the Public Works employees. So, in the memo, there is outlined three options. One would be to just provide the hazard reimbursement for police officers. Option number two would be to provide it to police officers and DPW workers, and option number three would be to not provide any hazard reimbursement for employees. There has been a, a internet slash cellphone reimbursement provided to the administrative employees who worked from, who worked from home during the sacred home when everything was shut down, when City Hall was shut down, the library was shut down. So these 12 sworn officers and eight eligible Public Works employees would be the only individuals left in the organization who haven't seen some sort of hazard reimbursement. And funding for this would be, would be through the roads to recovery, or routes to recovery, I keep saying that, routes to recovery reimbursement.
Okay, Bill, questions or comments?
No questions.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
No, no questions or comments.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
Teresa, any questions or comments? Linda, anything?
No.
Larry?
No.
Okay, so you have three options available to you, so if somebody would like to make a motion? Ryan?
I'll make a motion to approve option number two.
I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Ryan and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, moving right along. Um, discussion of possible action regarding 2021 city budget schedule?
So I can let Dan take this one, the budget, or the, I'm sorry, the memo is somewhat self-explanatory. Similar to what we've done in the, in years past, we have provided four options for the council to consider in terms of the budget process. Kind of outside of this item, we were talking with Anissa earlier today, and we are later in the process than we have been in years past. We're not, we're not missing any deadlines, but with the uncertainty that kind of surrounded what was happening, or, or at least the rumors that we had heard out of Madison, that slowed the process, and September was an odd month this year, and the fact that it had five Tuesdays. And so we kind of lost a week in our typical schedule. Nonetheless, the four options that Dan's put together here certainly meet all of our noticing requirements and would allow us to approve the, the budget well in advance of what would be required by state law. But what you'll see here is in each one of these options, basically, we would approve, or we would present a draft budget either next week at a special meeting or on the 20th of October, which is our regular council meeting. Each one of these would, again, adopt the budget or pass the budget in advance of the state requirement. Options one and three show for approval well in advance of that, even, option three actually is even in advance of Thanksgiving. But in none of these options do we have a, a meeting during the week of Thanksgiving, other than option one. So those are the things that council commonly asks, and as always, whatever we decide, we can deviate from. But we're just trying to get, you know, kind of get a roadmap forward for us as we present the budget. So I guess the question is, is there a preferred option?
And then, and then the only other caveat, when we, for those of you that attended the, or that partook in the fire commission meeting, when Jenny and I gave timelines to the contracted towns, because obviously the fire is gonna be a big driver, I believe, in, in, in the city budget in terms of what the city's allocation will be on, whatever the fire budget is. We had asked the contracted towns to provide us any answer if they are going to pursue staying in by October 16th, with an idea to, to provide signed contracts no later than November 16th. And that was kind of done intentionally, because they have dates and deadlines if they're going to hold a special meeting to increase the, their own levies and things of that nature. But hopefully with October 16th, that gives the commission and, and the town of Milton and the city council enough time, if there is someone that's interested in leaving, what that might mean for the, the fire department's overall budget. And then, obviously, we needed to put a, kind of a drop dead, we need a signed contract by. And I believe November 16th still gives us enough latitude to make necessary adjustments if it's going to be necessary.
Yeah, so if, if folks are interested in, in, and not that this should have any bearing on it, if, if we were, if we were to recommend an option, it would be option two for a lot of the reasons Dan just explained. It also avoids the Thanksgiving holiday, and also gives us three opportunities for special meetings on Tuesday nights if we wanted to, to have one. It's, it's kind of, it's one of the more spread out options, but, but I think with those kind of three caveats in place, it's the one that made the most sense to us. Right, Dan?
Yep.
Okay.
Or option four, but that would involve a special meeting next week, Tuesday, does the same thing.
Teresa?
Just a question, when would you have public groups submit their requests for money?
So we, we already have. Yeah, we already have. A couple of years ago, the Policy at Hawk Committee created that.
Yeah, I remember that, but they, they still spoke to us, didn't they?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, so what they did, so what that policy said was that it would be, that they would be due on August 31st, is that right, Inga?
Um, I think so.
Yeah.
End of August or the end of September, and then, no, the end of August, and then I think in the policy, it said that they would actually present at this meeting, but then with the budget, you know, just not quite on schedule this year, we were talking today about what meeting might make the most sense for them to present at.
Yeah, so, so we, we do have two requests, one from the gathering place and one from the Milton House. And as Inga pointed out, we had this conversation earlier today, and, you know, we thought it might be appropriate to have them present at the November 4th meeting. Yeah, it's not a budget meeting, but it's a regular council meeting, so. Yep.
Makes sense.
That was our thought process, at least, you know.
And what was the meeting that you thought, what was the option that you liked better? Al?
Option two is, we don't have a strong feeling about anything, but if, if we were to offer a recommendation, it would be two.
It's kind of nice to just keep our regular council nights that we already know we're going to have. Do you want to?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to go with option two.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I really didn't go around. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a budget schedule.
And as, and as I kind of noted, as we do every year, if things, we don't have to stick to that schedule, there's no, there's no legal ramifications. We do have to, we do have to publish a budget at some point, and there has to be a 15-day waiting period, and we do have to adopt the budget by December 6th. Those are the only things that are set in stone. So if we do need to deviate from that schedule, obviously, everybody will inform people well in advance of that. The good news is, is we have the vast majority of the numbers that we would need to put together the budget. You know, I think Dan characterized it as we're in the red zone today when we were talking about the budget, in terms of kind of having it in a position where we can present something on October 20th. I think, you know, it's like assessment ratio is one unknown variable. It's not a number that impacts the budget, but it does impact aspects of the budget. That's something that we still don't know yet, but we have all of our state aid numbers, we know our net new construction, we know our levy limit capacity. We're working through the departmental budgets and, and in looking at 2021 through the departmental budgets, so we're, we're, we are on schedule in that regard to have, to have a budget presented on October 20th.
All right. Strategic planning. Inga?
So now we're going to talk for the next hour. No, I'm kidding, we're not going to. I didn't really have anything major planned for tonight. I sent out the draft copy to everyone last week on Friday, and I sent it to the council, our employees, and all of the community members that have been involved in the process. So I'm getting a trickle of feedback received from, from all of those individuals. I haven't received much, but I did give a deadline of October 12th. So I'm just waiting until October 12th, and then we'll see what kind of feedback we get, and then on October 20th, I'm planning to have the council approve, if you so feel inclined. Were there any questions or comments on the document that I sent out last week?
I just wanna, again, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, and I did say to Inga that I thought it was pretty much spot on. But I wanted to thank Inga again in public because, for leading us through this. Well done.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay.
Bill, did you, I'm sorry, did Bill have something? Or no?
Just kinda saying, looking, looking good, Inga.
Thank you.
It's real good.
Anybody else want to give some more praise to Inga?
Great job, Inga.
Yeah, Inga.
All right, her head is swelling.
She's up in the stars.
Oh, she's a celestial strategic planning being. Okay, committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report? Nope.
Plan Commission, not only did they approve the item that was on the council agenda tonight, but they did approve the site plan for the new Dairy Queen. So, I think they want to break ground this week. So.
It's kind of exciting. We haven't had a fast food place in just forever. I don't know how we I don't know how we survived.
Just quick for Parks and Rec 2, I'm working on finishing up the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. I'm planning to send that out to the commission likely tomorrow, either in the afternoon or in the morning, for them to take a look at. And then we have a special meeting, I guess, scheduled for October 12th to go over that in a little bit more detail and see if there are any changes. And then I'm hoping that it'll be ready for council approval and plan commission approval on October 20th.
Any staff reports? Howie? Yeah, you, I'm looking at you, Howie.
Yeah, I know. No, nothing really out of the ordinary. We're just trying to get ready for winter now and fall. So the leaf truck may be here next week, the new one, so.
Yay.
It's a little bigger, probably a little noisier, but it should work better. And otherwise, it's just a lot of the regular things, so.
You gonna take the leaf truck around for a tour of the city? When it gets here?
What? Oh, if you want to go on a ride with it, you could.
No, I'm asking if you are. Are you gonna be the one taking it around for a tour of the city?
There's two guys that have dibs on that. They like to drive it, so.
The question is, is can, like my shop back, I can turn my shop back around and it becomes a blower. Can we turn the new? Leaf back door candy in it? And then that could be our fourth, our Halloween celebration is to drive around shooting candy around the town.
Well, it's almost anything that's laying in the curb is gonna go in the truck. So people shouldn't leave things out there.
If, when it is here, though, we could do a picture and post that on social media just because it's not the regular Dumbo truck that everyone has grown to love over the years.
Pretty close. It's got a snouts on the side, that's all.
I could smash a bottle of champagne on it if you want me to.
Drive up and get it. And then they'll sweep it up after.
I would be sure not to park my wheelchair too close to the curb.
Yeah. You know, there has been, there's been talk in the past of a city Milton band. So if Scott was still here, I'd run that one by him. I think we should be called Snouts on the Side.
Perfect.
Are you gonna do a parade with the new truck? Gonna drive it around town? Go through the schools and the library? Let all the kids see it?
Um, probably not. I don't think so.
Can have large gatherings around the leaf truck.
They will see it.
We may have deviated from the agenda at this point.
Driving the leaf truck is the most popular man in town, also the least popular because he's not there, so.
Um.
Snouts on the side.
Who else do we, Dan?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mark E.? An ice mark? No.
The only thing I have to add really is that the concrete pavement replacement is scheduled to start next week, Monday, and it will take approximately three weeks to complete. So Madison Avenue will have lane restrictions and lane shifts over the course of the next three weeks.
Oh, well, let's make sure we get that out on social media and read the comments. Inga, anything?
Well, I was just gonna ask Mark if he could send me the details on those locations and what that was gonna look like.
Okay, anybody else? Al?
We start interviews next week for our new crew lead position, which is Donnie Zimmerman's replacement. Not that Donnie will ever be replaced. That's why we changed the job title, in fact, because we knew we could never replace Donnie. But we start those interviews next week.
All right. Is everybody ready? For team building? I know you missed it, and I was even really, really nice to you, gave you the question ahead of time, which?
I don't remember it.
You know, after I said what my anti-power was, I lit a candle on the stove and left the air for several hours.
What was the question?
You have to repeat the question. I don't think Teresa was at the end of the meeting last time.
Oh, okay, so.
Get back in. That wasn't the last one, though, was it?
They all run together at this point.
They pretty much do. My life is one big meeting right now. So what is your anti-superpower? Your anti-superpower? Mine was the kitchen because I had fires in every kitchen, including the house that you used to live in, Teresa.
Yeah.
The box of the oven.
Kitchen?
So who would like to go first?
I actually did some research. I had to figure out, you know, what anti-heroes and that kind of thing there were. And I found one that fit me pretty well. Captain America, there's an anti-hero called The Punisher. And given my fondness for puns, I thought Punisher and punning was my anti-power.
He was my favorite comic book character when I was a kid.
The Punisher?
And?
Disreputable cop, I believe.
For future reference, when you sign on to Zoom, could you sign on with The Punisher?
Good idea.
Anybody else want to volunteer? I mean, Bill, my God, you researched. Hard to act of foul. He is The Punisher, totally The Punisher.
I will, I'll take a cop out. I didn't, I didn't get much. My anti-superhero power is seeing colors. Because I can't.
You're colorblind?
Yes. There you go. I gotta, I mean, that was easy for me.
Total cop out. It's gonna be out of your performance evaluation.
Top that one, guys.
My anti-superhero power is my wheelchair when it breaks down. Can be a real pain sometimes.
I'm gonna take roughly Al's route and say pollen because I'm allergic. Causes bad allergy, so we'll say pollen.
I'm sending you some in the mail now in an envelope.
I have some on my car.
I got all night. You know, I don't have a life.
I am gonna go with my time management skills because I have a habit of thinking there's more time in the day than there actually is.
That's kind of me, too. But I thought, like, burning down kitchens would be more exciting.
I'm going to go with parking. I have successfully not parallel parked since my driving test. So I avoid it.
Good job, Inga. Howie, I think for April 1st, you need to change all the parking lines at City Hall, so Inga is forced to parallel park.
I'm gonna go with proofreading, even though I'm a librarian. I feel like I have too many mistakes and things that are published.
How many books have you published?
Well, not like Facebook posts, things that end up in the Courier, posters I make that have wrong words on them. I catch them too late.
Okay, she needs a performance improvement plan now. Mark, Mark S.
I forget.
I think that should be noted in the next contract when we renegotiate it.
Sounds like a job interview.
Let's just not, let's just not remind them when the next contract's up. We may get free attorney services.
Yeah, we tried that last year, Al. It didn't work, remember?
That's, that actually is true, yes.
There goes that strategy.
I would have to say mine is technology. See, with Zoom, I can tweak this straight. But I only do it a couple of times a month, so I guess I have to excuse myself for that.
The Punisher, he's already taken his name. So you are not alone.
Say the same thing, but I'm actually gonna tweak it a little bit. I have to say, my phones. I hate these phones. That's all I can say. And I have to get a new one, so I'm gonna have to relearn that one all over again.
Get your kids to come.
I'll piggyback off of something that was already said. My inability to conform to pulling into parking spots because I like to back into them, and I also like to try reverse angle parking. I park reverse angled most of the time in the downtown.
All right, you know, I guess we're just waiting on a couple of people here.
Can't tie a necktie. Never been able to. Just cannot do it.
The deep dark secrets of Howie.
Yeah.
Inga, change Howie's screen name to Clip On Robinson.
No, I have someone help me with the necktie.
Mark E.
I, I don't, I didn't think about it hard enough, I guess. There's plenty of stuff I'm not great at, so lots of stuff to work on.
Can you just go grab your wife real quick?
That's probably a good one, actually. Not romantic enough, maybe.
There's books for that. Well, I'm very proud of you as a guest. You did not disappoint. Made up for all those tie boats you made me cast earlier. Anything else for anybody? Our next, oh, oh, we have to go in a closed session yet. Oh, I really would have pushed you guys to move on quicker. So, um, it takes me until October 20th, but we're gonna go with Bill right now for the reading.
I would move we convene in closed session pursuant to section 1980.85, 1EE, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And references acquisition of property. And Mark, did we get the citation right this time?
Yes, there's only one E, but yes.
Okay. There are two on what was sent out. I stuttered the E, only one E.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Do you have anything?
No, I meant to say approved.
Oh.
I wound up too late.
Teresa opposes going home tonight.
Just, just quick, that was a Ryan motion and Linda second?
Yes.
Okay.
Good job, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice.
All right, bye. Take care, stay safe, see you soon.
Bye.